All right, good evening, everybody. Welcome to July 28th, 2025 Board of Selectmen meeting. About 6:30. We went in non-public 6 o'clock for personnel matter. And that brings us to 6:30. We called order to the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anybody here for public comment?
Good evening, Richard Buck. Congratulations to two newest selectmen, a rookie and a wily old veteran. I'll talk about two subjects. One is public comment and the other one is ex officios. On public comment, it's a sloppy slope to try and restrict what people can say, infringing upon the right of free speech. New Hampshire Municipal Association recognizes a town in Maine as kind of epitomizing what the issues are and a statement that could be made. And I'm just going to read it. It's very brief. The water suckers does not have the right to prohibit disparaging, rude, and ugly remarks of a personal nature. But speakers are encouraged to strive for accuracy in their statements and to refrain from personal, rude, or provocative remarks. That's about the extent that a lot of people feel you can go when it comes to public comment. You can restrict public comment to agenda items. There's no problem doing that. You just have to be uniform and however you administer it. But I think it's a great opportunity for members of the public to come in and make comment. And I think the way it's been managed over the past year up to now is fine. It's kind of free flowing a little bit, not overly restrictive. You don't have a time watch in front of you that's ticking and you stop somebody in mid-sentence. So I think it works fine. The only thing I would request, if somebody comes in here and lies, and this has happened, that you call them and push back on the spot, either while they're standing here or when they sit down. And I know, I've been a selectman and we've had situations where the board had to react to comments that were made. It's not, it's not easy. It's probably one of the most difficult tasks you have, addressing something like that. You don't want it to be confrontational and you don't want to get in a long debate. But, you know, if somebody lies, I think you need to correct them. And I know you did in one instance where the board, three members of the board, the last three standing at one point, were accused of, and a town official, by the way, I don't know who that town official would be, was accused of basically conspiring to get rid of the two selectmen. You did respond, it was just three or four weeks later in a set of minutes. It would have been nice, and I hope the board would consider responding immediately, either while the person's standing here or after a person has sat down. And that's all I have on, on the public comment. Ex officios, it just seemed to happen over the past year or so, that the board has decided through, I think, a policy that they would add ex officios to boards and committees that don't require ex officios. I believe in the town aware, we don't have a budget committee, we have a finance committee which is structurally different, but we do have a land use, a planning board that requires an ex officio. But I believe in this town, that's the only one that is required. I, I've looked at the R-.
CIP accommodates a select board member?
I'm sorry, which one?
CIP.
CIP. That's an internal.
No, I think it's the common board.
Well, a planning board does require an ex officio.
Hang on there. I said CIP.
I know, I know. Well, CIP is a subset to the planning board.
I'm just saying, the CIP is specifically delineated in RSA 641, 6 through 9.
Okay.
I think, you can look at it.
Yeah. But there are two boards, Energy Commission and Park and Recreation. It's not a requirement. But we do have ex officios. And my concern is that it creates a bias, it creates an advocacy. And I'll point to, there are two examples of the concern I have. And the most recent one is in Park and Recreation, where the ex officio member, and you're expected to be an advocate for that committee, right? But the ex officio member came in and made a motion as a member of the board for the committee. You know, as a committee member, I can't stand here and make a motion. So you've got to foot up, right? Because a member of the board is making the motion. And 90% of the time, the motion's going to, there'll be a second to the motion. And about 75 to 80% of the time, it's based on my experience, that a motion will carry. I think that's an unfair advantage for that particular committee. I don't know why it was done. I don't know if it was done for oversight or what. But you're expected to be an advocate for that committee. And I would rather have the board be presented with a proposal, regardless of what it is, and not have a member of the board do it. I think there's an advantage to doing that. The other, the other one is the Energy Commission, and there was a presentation being made regarding a grant, and the chair indicated we have two links on the, on the, on the board, two members that have been ex officio members, I guess, on the Conservation Commission. So I think they're expecting a board member who's an ex officio to be an advocate for that committee. And I think it's an unfair advantage to do that. That's all I have. Thanks.
Just in, I know we don't have to respond, but I'd like to respond to Dick's comments on the ex officio thing. I tend to agree with him. I really think that the boards need to come to their own decisions and present their cases to the selectmen, not, not have one of the selectmen present it to the other selectmen for them. That's, that's, that's my take.
Well, Jack, when you speak, can you come closer to the mic? I already got a text message about you.
I promise I won't speak anymore.
They just said they can't agree yet.
No, I don't disagree with you necessarily. I don't even know how we came to that, if it was even a policy they made or just something we started doing. But we can look into that.
I think in the creation of the bylaws, it named how many people were in at least parts of American energy, but conservation doesn't make their bylaws, don't say anything about having, they call it the E.S.A., not even an ex officio.
I guess maybe when they rename everybody in March can decide if they want to have one some of them. Anybody else for public comment?
Could I just, brief comment?
Sure.
There is a, the board did create a policy, a selectmen's policy. There's also liaisons, liaison to various committees. They can't vote, they can't make motions. They're there, I guess, just to provide some oversight. I, I think that's more representative of what I would consider to be a non-biased approach to these committees, bringing information back to the board, but not coming back to the board, making motions. So liaison is a, is something that the board had discussed and is part of the policy.
Okay. Paul? Can you?
We can't start the other.
No, not until seven.
So the chief's.
You ready to do your grant thing, chief?
Yep. So I have the FY 2026 New Hampshire Department of Highway Safety Highway Safety Grant Packet for your approval. The New Hampshire Department of Highway Safety has awarded the Ware Police Department $9,500 for their FY 26 to complete state coordinated directed enforcement initiatives, which are speeding, DUI, text while driving, et cetera. We have a 25% match, which comes to $2,375. We complete our match by documenting our time administering the grant and using the patrol vehicle. We have been participating in this grant since 2022 with no issues. I have also included the completed grant paperwork for your reference, which you all got by email. Additionally, the New Hampshire Department of Highway Safety has approved funding for the replacement of two in-car radar systems. The radar in both patrol Dodge Chargers need to be replaced. The total cost for the equipment is $4,268. We have a 25% match, which comes to $1,067. Additionally, Ospey Mountain has provided a quote to remove the existing radars in the Dodges and install the new equipment for $5,000, um, $5,540. The new total cost to the, the total cost of department would be $1,607,000, oh my gosh, I request to provide funding required for the equipment match and installation using the WPD detailed fund. This equipment will also reduce the cost of the new, the next two replacement vehicles as new radar units will not need to be purchased. There would only be a cost to remove and reinstall the equipment in a new vehicle, and for each vehicle would be about $270.
Don't get to reading it?
Yep.
Do you have questions?
It all depends upon the, off of the chargers, once they get replaced, can be reused in another vehicle?
Correct. We would, it'd be $270 based on current costs to take the radar out of the Dodge Charger, and we'd take other equipment out of it too, and put it in whatever new vehicle it goes in.
Make a motion to accept the FY 26 New Hampshire Department of Safety Highway Safety Grant as presented in the amount of $9,500. And the amended grant terms is presented in the grant agreement. Amendment notice for an adjusted total grant limitation of $12,701.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Yes.
Then you got the second part.
Now the radar guns. Oh, yes. Is that, is that this one here, chief?
Uh, where you got to sign.
Oh, where I got to sign. I thought it was for the radar. Yeah, all right. So I make motion, I guess, should I do that or should one of you guys do that since I am chairman? It's asking to have me do it.
Oh, you have first.
See where it reads.
Make a motion to have, right, right here, to be the chairman to complete this, to have the board selectman chairman complete blocks 1.11 and 1.12 in the grant agreement. And please Chief Moore to complete the subrecipient blocks. Please Chief Moore shall complete the remainder of the agreement as the approved subrecipient.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I guess I should have stayed on it, I guess.
You should.
I have to, though. Certainly can.
Give that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
I guess everybody else is probably waiting until after seven, huh?
Yeah. But you can do your.
We can do manifest, I guess.
You can do one, you can do the other.
Was there anybody else coming here to listen to the duck pond or no?
No, I got an answer. No, no.
Other one do that then? Yeah. It's medical call. You guys all set?
Good, sir.
You gonna head out?
He's gonna grab a point.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm shift today, so I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Okay, make sure I'm speaking loud enough. Last meeting, I raised my hands after discussion regarding the duck pond development and duck pond. The previous meeting really spoke about for the Conservation Commission regarding a water leveler, a pond leveler, to keep the water level constant irrespective of the beaver action and/or the state ripping out the beaver pond. So to that end, Ernie got up, and I basically took an action to go figure out what the disconnect is on Duck Pond Road. And this is for the, Duck Pond Development. And this is for, basically, if you want to look at the total project, this is the total project right here. Duck Pond to be down on the right-hand side, this being the particular one they want to do right here, and we're speaking right, that little spot right there. That's where the bridge, even though there's no bridge seen, that's where the bridge is intended to go originally. It's basically terminated right there. So this is stubbed off right now. And there's a rather large ravine here, and I, I'm not, I don't have a measure, but I would say it's on a scale of River Road Bridge, the one that's going to be replaced, substantial. So this, you see these two pages here? That's what these two pages are, right here. So I cut this out because this here is this sheet right here. The only place that shows the bridge and this design is this little area here that would show us the whole view of the drop. This is actually the bridge on a topography map. So I cut that piece out. So basically, this is the area we're talking. The issue is, you can see this line right here. This is the 25-foot conservation easement off the 50-foot right-of-way for the road, as well as this. You'll notice that the wings of the bridge extend beyond, okay? I would make a point that this lot here is owned by MBAC, yet to be sold. This is conservation land. This is all conservation land here. So the real problem is, when they went from being a bridge, and this is a little bit of a problem, which I'll speak at the last, they wanted to go from a bridge because it is a substantial bridge. And I, I think it's probably a cost issue for the developer. And so when you look at his design that he changed from a bridge, he came up with this. And I believe this has gone through DES, the Planning Board, and everybody, his brother. And they figured out, they were trying to keep within the wings of the bridge, but the problem is, this here is the only, this here is the only relief they got for the 25-foot, 25-foot right here. So even the wings protrude outside of the 25-foot exemption for putting the bridge. So what they did was, they tried to stay within the, within the bridge, okay? When in fact, it protruded outside the easement line. So one of the thoughts was, and I gotta say that Mary Ann gave me a lot of help getting these 42 pages, interpreting them. We had Cam there to help with some young eyes to actually look at the details, and Melissa as well. So I really thank them for helping me out. And I had Craig also invest probably two or three hours of his time on this. So part of the problem is, to be legal, this has to be, well, actually, I got the plan right here. To make this legal, this has to be pulled back to the 25-foot line. The reason it can't the way it is because the slope is so deep that if you carry the slope, it just goes beyond the 25-foot horizontal setback. And likewise, on this side here, this will spill even further. So one of the ways that Craig advised is you could take and move this whole thing over six feet, which pushes the road and everything over. So in order to make this legal, you have to stay within this property here, come back with a retaining wall that Mitch blocks, and then go like there to wherever the slope would taper back to 25 feet. So this requires going back to the Planning Board, going back to DES, and it's kind of a lengthy issue. So I did talk with Ernie regarding the options. This was the last discussion, but he heard the discussion about duck pond. And he says, if there's any issue regarding duck pond, I'd be happy to give them the water rights so that they basically have, almost, almost with the exception of a little sliver from the state, have a control of the water. So he, I don't know if that's been officially communicated back to the Conservation Commission, but I believe he's coming second Wednesday of next month to do that, whether he does or not. I haven't heard from him since. There's a little bit of a rub here because this is where the lawyers will make their money or lose their money or whatever. If you look at this design, this was passed by everybody in 2005, almost a birthday. It's, it's August.
August 26.
So it's almost 20-year birthday, right?
For the original bridge.
But even the original bridge is illegal because it's outside the 25-foot. But there is a little thing in here on accepting and reserving to the grantor, which is MBAC, the right and, the right and, let me glasses off, this is kind of a fuzzy. Accepting and reserving to the grantor, this is a deed to the property, the right and easement to construct, maintain, repair, replace slope and drainage facilities, fire systems, temporary roads, driveways on the property may be necessary, desirable, the connection with the development, the grantor subdivision having construction of the roadway. Said easements areas are more particularly shown on the, and so this language is kind of very, very loose. So if I was an NBC, if I was a lawyer on NBC's side, I'd say, these protrusions are covered by exceptions.
Which kind of is his argument, he was in there.
Correct. But it took almost eight hours to figure this out, to get all the information. But if you're on the other side saying that, the diagram is the law, then this is not compliant from the beginning. So it's, I don't know who's going to win, but the lawyers certainly will. So that's the issue. So the real question is, and part of the problem is, once this deed has been accepted, the only people that can make an exception of this, the State Attorney General's Office delegate that authority to the Conservation Commission, not the Board of Selectmen. We don't have any say in this. So it's really a question of what they see as reasonable. I'm not being wise about that. That's really their decision because there is some issues here, and I do understand their concern. This is supposed to be a bridge that's probably a 50-foot span, and, you know, and this is supposed to be, you know, something for all the pond down here to travel because it's basically a road cutting it off this way, and now there's a road cutting it off this way. So this is a way for anything that's moving through here and an open path. I get their idea that the bridge is more optimal for the animals and stuff, whether it's turtles or whatever. And this would cause a restriction. I'm not an expert, so I don't know how much. But the cushion game actually required the design before it was approved to have light shafts down here to allow natural light to come into this. This is 124 feet long. So it's not a, it's not an insignificant cove.
I think it's five by five?
Five by five, open bottom. So the real question becomes.
Just what is we used to 50-foot span bridge? Yeah.
If MBAC gets told they got to live within the design, then their choice is to either redesign this, which, not making light of it, it's all money. This is about a 12-foot wall, 12, 14-foot wall that contained the slope because it was spilled over about 15 feet. So redesign this, go through the whole permitting process again, and build this. His problem is, I understand from him, is he already bought the cove.
Yes.
So he's rock, he was ready to rock and roll last month or whatever, and all of a sudden the brakes went on. So he's going to miss a, his argument is going to miss another construction here. And so if not, let's say he doesn't want to do any of this, and he wants to go hang his hat on this clause, an interpretation that says that loose term is, I don't pretend to be a lawyer, but particularly shown, doesn't say shown, particularly shown. So I don't know what that meant, and it talks about drainage and slope, drainage and slope. So.
In your talk, your comment beginning regarding the pond, I believe, was, was talked about by some members of possibly being a trade for this conservation easement so they could stretch their cove into it.
He said, well, it's, it's, it's really, yes. He understands their concern of duck pond level. That's, that's a major issue. I'm not taking a lot of this, but that's significant to have this. And he said openly, he says, I'd be willing to give up the waters. And I haven't communicated that, I guess Andy was on vacation, and I felt I owed it to Andy. So, and then we got a chance to, so.
Well, I feel some of that, I understood some of that talk about that was kind of in trades of conservation would.
Yeah.
Give up some other easement so that he could do this project.
Well, I guess, I'm not sure how it works legally, but if, if the Conservation Commission had a power to wave the magic wand.
Right.
And say it fits within this explanation. He would give them the rights. And the reason, reason I brought it up that night is because I had looked at this before. And this is the town piece right here.
Yes.
Okay? This is here to here is his. So it bifurcates the pond.
Right.
And it's a little bit right there.
Yeah.
For the state. But principally is these two people, if he says no, it becomes a big hassle. I don't know. So he's looking for, I don't know if it sends some gratification, but he would like to get moving. And I think Wednesday night, or it is, date is the 9th or something, in August, he's going to show up there. I don't know if he's going to show up with his lawyer and his engineers or whatever, but that was the plan, so whether it changes or not, I'll learn himself. That's the question.
I guess we'll see what their conversation is when they all get together.
Yeah. So he does have a solution, but unfortunately it's time dependent.
There's not much action this board can take.
Well, I.
There's no action this board can take, I don't think.
Well, maybe. My understanding, the board gave them the right to spend $10,000 of their conservation money to fight this. If they run out of $10,000, the board is going to take another action up to that point. So really legally, Attorney General is in their ballpark, not us, because they are the ones who administer the conservation easement.
Well, we can revisit this a little more. We got to start at seven, right?
Yeah, well, nothing you can revisit until after he knows the conservation.
What are the lawyers that throwing paper back for?
Right. Appreciate you taking time on that.
Well, just do this for a while. On electronics.
Do you think you can open it?
Yeah, now you got to open it.
All right, so it's seven o'clock, very close there, 7:01. Like to open public hearing to hear public comments on change in ambulance billing fees. My guess to start that off, we can hear a little input from our assistant chief.
Don't mind me, couple technical challenges. Wait on the computer. Beth was nice enough to loan me her laptop so I could do this, but she did give me a heads up. She goes, it's a little slow to fire up. So I turned it on earlier, but I shut the lid. I should have just kept it open. Yep, I'm getting to that, right. Just. Just didn't want to plug in till I was, I was ready.
You want to rest and watch it?
Yeah, watch me go through and fumble through it. Just select it, yeah? All right. No, thanks. Standby. I apologize.
Paramedics need a course in outlook, PowerPoint.
Works just fine on my computer.
Yes, the problem, you use a computer that you're not used to.
Now we're back in business.
Yes.
Sweet. All right. So I came to you guys a couple of weeks ago to kind of give you a brief description and a heads up on proposed ambulance billing rate proposals and changes. I did want to take a second, I've been on vacation for the past week. Our EMS captain, Christina Hood, did a lot of work on this presentation for me, which was great. She did a phenomenal job for that, and I just wanted to kind of give her a quick shout out and appreciation for that because we're a small team and it kind of takes everybody to get this stuff done. So, all right. So starting right off the gate, why are we changing and why now? Our ambulance billing rates have not changed since 2018. That was under Chief Vazina, done under the Board of Fireworks. Since then, our capital improvement projects have increased in cost over 100%. We're pushing equipment well beyond its intended lifespan. The Senate Bill 245, which has passed the House and the Senate, it's waiting for Governor Ayotte to sign, now requires private insurance to pay at 325% of the Medicare rate. Right? We talked about balanced billing before. Balanced billing is the practice when a private insurer gets a bill from an ambulance company, decides to pay an allotted amount, and sends the remaining portion to the consumer. The, the point of that bill was, Senate Bill 245 was to end that act and to fund ambulances appropriately off private insurance. If we don't change soon, there's caution coming to us from ComStar, our ambulance billing company, that there is an ambulance billing cap percentage increase, meaning that they could lock us in and say, you can't increase your rates over 3% per year over this amount of years. You know, the, the money that from Senate Bill 245, right, is required to be paid by this insurance company now, so that remaining balance, the full balance of the bill that's sent to them will be required to pay once Governor Ayotte signs the bill. If we do not change it, our ambulance billing rates, which are currently, and I'll show you later, are well below that 325% of the Medicare rate, we are essentially leaving money on the table. We're leaving money that can go in our capital improvement, and we won't see that. Some points of note before we get into it, two-thirds of our average payees are Medicare or Medicaid. They won't see any increase in rates or fees. Those are set rates by, by the federal government. They won't see a change in their, their ambulance bill or practices. So this change primarily affects about one-third of our billing income. Our billing, it affects the private insurance provider and it affects the self-pay, right, or the non-insured patient, which really boiled down to about 10% of our runs. Some background for you. We talked about this briefly the other night, but I wanted to cover it again in case people had not heard it. There's different levels of ambulance billing. We have BLS emergency, there's BLS non-emergency, which we're not going to cover that much tonight because we don't really do it. ALS-1 and ALS-2, there is some ALS rates as well for non-emergency. Those are typically set for transfer facilities, going inter-facility between different hospitals. We don't do that practice. We do plan to match our, if we were ever to do that, we would match our ALS rates to the same as our emergency rates, so that way, if we ever did a transfer for some reason in the future, we had a rate that we could actually bill for. So BLS emergency, our basic life support, is medically necessary transport by ambulance where the patient requires basic medical monitoring care but not advanced interventions. Criteria is care provided by two E M Ts, non-invasive treatments, and example, some examples of that, oxygen administration, basic wound care, splinting, blood signs and monitoring. We bill at BLS level even though we have ALS providers. So just because we have a paramedic on the ambulance or we have an advanced E M T on the ambulance does not necessarily mean that patient always gets an ALS level of care. Some people don't require, you know, a lot, a lot of times, you know, like somebody has a broken arm and they get some decent splinting and that controls their pain, they usually get billed at a BLS rate. An ALS-1 emergency is emergency response when the patient requires at least one advanced life support intervention administered by a paramedic or advanced E M T. So typically these, which ALS-1 emergencies, just so you guys know, are the highest of our call volumes, right, are billed call volumes, and I'll go through a couple of numbers on that in just a minute. IV therapy, advanced airway management, or medication administration, typically IV medication administration. These, a lot of times what we see are anti-metics, your anti-nausea medications, you know, for people that are throwing up, fluids, and when it comes to advanced airway management, this is nebulized medications, things along those lines.
Got a question?
Go ahead.
Medication administration.
Yep.
I mean, someone breaks an arm, you give them Tylenol, is that medication administration?
It is, but that would be billed under a BLS rate because Tylenol is a BLS level of medication.
What kind of medication are you talking about on ALS-1?
ALS-1 are like your nebulizers, so your Albuterol's, Duonebs, Zofran, Epinephrine. ALS-2, and like I said, I'm going to talk a little bit after this on different call volumes and how much we bill for these. And ALS-2 is the highest billing level, use more, more intensive life-saving care is provided, so it's administration of three or more ALS medications or at least one ALS Level 2 procedure. So these are, these are patients that are typically critically ill. These are patients that are intubated, they're placed on presser medications to support their blood pressure. Some ALS-2 interventions would be like a sync cardioversion, somebody, his heart rate is too fast, and we took the monitor and shocked them to slow their, their heart rate down, that's a paramedic level procedure. There's a few others. Some are actually our lowest runs out of the year, right, because it's, it's very rare that you see somebody getting three or more ALS meds that are above an ALS Level 1 along with ALS-2 procedures. A quick rundown of our payer mix data, if you guys can see that from there, you guys did. Okay. So this is over the past four years, so it's from 2021 to 2024. The red column you see is Medicare, the black column, I think it looks black on that screen, is Medicaid. The blue is other private insurance, the green is Blue Cross, and the orange is self-pay. They label it self-pay insured, that's a self-payer, right, that's somebody who does not have insurance, or they may have an offshoot of like, you know, Anthem or AARP, some sort of side benefit, right? That's not considered health insurance. As you guys can see, over the years, it fluctuates, right, as our resident population fluctuates, we see that we have some dips in that, and also as our call volume fluctuates, we see we have some dips in that. But to note out of this, Medicare and Medicaid are the majority of our billing, right, our ambulance billing. So really looking at, you know, kind of where we see an impact, we're going to see an impact, like I said, in the private insurance are the Blue Cross, which runs about a third of our ambulance billing. So some service level data for you guys over the past four years as well, from 2021 to 2024. As you see, our calls fluctuate every year, right? I did run an, an average, you know, the average for calls for the year is about 265, 262.5. But ALS-1s, you're going to see are pretty much the majority of our calls. BLS was 58.0 net, I averaged out of these four years, just so you guys know. ALS-1s were 262.5, BLS was 58.25, and ALS-2 was 13.25. So the majority where we see, we're going to see an increase is going to be in those ALS Level 1 billing opportunities. So revenue collected, which goes into our special revenue fund, right, which is deemed for our capital improvement projects of, you know, vehicles, EMS equipment, things of that nature. Over the past four years, ranges anywhere from, you know, the lowest being 181, 453, and the highest last year at 280,780.
I just find the dip in 2003.
Yeah, so 2023, the call numbers were a lot lower. And so if you go back to 2023, I believe in our service level, if you look at the call numbers, it's 264 billable runs versus almost 100, over 100 more in 2024. The other ways that we can look at total revenue collected and, you know, explain some dips, you know, with, and this is a reach, right, is how many self-payers do we have that year, right, that were outside of there? But we're going to see a fluctuation. The average that, out of these four years is 225,298 and 25 cents is what we're pulling in. Our current EMS billing rates, so these are set in 2018, they're implemented, I think, January 1st, 2019. I wanted to make a correction on that because I think I had said they were set in 2018 in the last move. So BLS is $800, and ALS-1 is $1,200, and ALS-2 is $1,800, and mileage is billed at $15 a mile.
But this is not the Medicare.
Correct. Nope, these are our current billing rates.
Or everything but Medicare and Medicaid.
Correct.
So it's the very minority piece.
Yep. Here's Medicare and Medicaid, you're asking about. So Medicare, and these are their allowable fees. Medicare sets it from the federal government, they come out every couple of years, and they send it out and say, this is exactly what you're allowed to pay. So BLS would be $458.67, ALS-1s are $544.67, ALS-2s are $788.34, and mileage is reimbursed at $9 per mile. Medicaid, BLS is 145, ALS-1 is 175, ALS-2 is 175, and mileage $2.60 per mile. Medicare and Medicaid. So Medicare is federally funded, that comes through federal government. Medicaid is a joint between the federal government and state. Medicare is 65 or older or certain qualifying conditions. Medicaid is income-based, just so you guys have an idea on the changes of those, and kind of, I feel like they're very interused topics when people talk about billing Medicare and Medicaid. I even get confused quite often because I'm like, which one are we talking about again? And I have to like remember which one is which.
Yeah, dramatically different, so.
Yeah, and just so you guys can see comparison, right, of what we're billing currently, right, we talked about that. So area comparisons. So ComStar is nice enough to give us an area comparison to give us an idea of where we fall in the area, because I think a lot of times the concern is, where do we fall? Are we number one in the area? Are we billing the highest amount? You know, and I could see some compassion for that. They won't tell us who is who, and I understand that they have some client privacy for that, but you can give an idea of currently where we fall in the area, right? And if you guys kind of keep that idea in mind, once we kind of get to a proposal, you'll see we fall more in line towards the top three or four.
But these are numbers for current, not for the.
Correct. Yep. All right, so we talked about Senate Bill 245. I gave you guys the example. If firefight and rescue continues to bill below 325% of Medicare, insurance companies will only reimburse what is billed, even though the law will allow them to pay significantly more. I did also want to note that the town can be subject to rate increase restrictions. We talked about that. ComStar, our ambulance billing company, warned us of this, and this is something that they're watching very closely. And a quick example, if a BLS transport is billed at 800, if we stay at our current rates, but 325% of Medicare, so Senate Bill 245 is signed by Governor Ayotte, it's on her desk, we're waiting for that to be signed, is $1,490.68, the insurer will only pay 800, not the $1,490.68 they're required to pay under the law. The net loss for us is $690.68, and that's for a single run.
I got a question.
Yep.
Regarding the, this whole, they're required to pay under the law, that's what they're required to authorize. The, the patient probably has to pay deductible and, and everything else.
Yeah, and that's, and we can't, I can't control what the patient's deductible is.
Yeah. So, I mean, it's really, it's really, when you say they, it's not just the insurance company, it's the insured with their insurance company.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
Yep, yeah, and, and we talked about this, you know, briefly, and unfortunately, I can't control what the insurance company is going to do.
No, I understand that.
Their benefit and.
Yeah, you don't know whatever that's for insurance.
What I, what I see is we're, if, if, once Governor Ayotte signs this bill, we're going to be leaving a lot of money on the table if we don't adjust our rates quickly, and especially looking at the amount of time that we've not adjusted our rates. You know, if you look at 2018 to now, that's a long time to, to really kind of sit aside and not look at this issue. And it's catching up with us quickly in our capital improvement plan, you can see it over time as we're starting to push stuff out.
Oh, the equipment is escalating pretty fast.
Yeah, and we're pushing our equipment, like I said, long beyond its lifespan because, you know, the, the point of that is to keep that off, off the taxpayer. So another, another kind of just review of the Medicare rate, what 325% of the Medicare rate is, where we're at currently, but as you can see in, in the last column, right, the BLS emergency is $690.68 below ALS- The BLS emergency is $690.68, below, ALS one is $570.18. The ALS two emergency is $762.14, and the mileage is 1425 below. So, last layer suggests the EMS billing rates for 2025. BLS is gonna be increased from $800 to 1490.68. ALS one, $1,770.70. ALS two, $2,562.14, and mileage increased to 29.25 per mile.
So those towns that are unidentified have the very high numbers.
Yep.
They have to come down to this formula?
They're not, they're not gonna be reimbursed at the numbers that they're charging. So they're gonna get reimbursed, correct, yep, they're gonna get reimbursed at the rate of 325% of Medicare.
Charge them anything they want, they're only gonna pay.
Yep. Any further questions on?
Those towns that were up there, did they say whether they were municipal-run services, or were they private services?
They're from Hillsborough County, they wouldn't say if they're municipal or private.
Okay.
But they did say they're all from Hillsborough County, so just give us an average.
Okay.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, the proposed rates are exactly 325 of the Medicare.
Correct, we matched it to 325 of the Medicare. So we talked to ComStar Ambulance Billing Company and said, what's 325% of the Medicare rate? And they said, here's the numbers. So I wanted to keep it as simple as possible, and I think for ease of billing, right? In ease of discussion.
Have you?
And we still are seeing a, a large increase.
Have you taken like last year and imputed these numbers and see what you would have had for income?
Yeah, so, I can tell you, everyone is extremely cautious to give you a number. So I did a little, I did a little bit of math, right? And trust me, it's paramedic math, so give it a little bit of faith. But looking at it currently, if we were to average out the last four years, and our run numbers, we would look at almost a $200,000 increase into our, into our CIP fund.
Over the four-year period?
Over a single year.
A single year.
Correct.
So on average, it would basically double the revenue?
Correct.
That's my understanding. What does a mileage apply to, trip two or the trip two and back?
Trip loaded, so mileage applies to when the patient is in the ambulance. Which obviously for us, we do see higher mileage rates, just because of our distances that we travel.
Further loss from heart.
Yeah. But that does also relate to further wear and tear on the ambulance, and the ambulance lifespan decreasing. Any other questions?
So what is the governor, governor going to sign this, or?
I don't know, it's been on her desk, so I don't know. I don't know if she's gonna sign it or veto it.
So this is moot if she doesn't sign it?
It may be moot, it's not moot. Let me recorrect myself. What is not moot is we still need to adjust our ambulance billing rates.
It's a difference, but.
It is a difference.
This is mandate, if you will, for capping.
Correct.
What they call surprise billing?
Yep.
Surprise.
Yeah.
Where you got the bill, right?
Correct.
So just from the inflationary standpoint, it's probably 18 to 25 seven years, it's probably almost 30%.
So I think I looked at our increase, and it was in the average of, if we wanna say if we're gonna, as we increase over that span, it was about 25% per year to get to this.
No, I'm saying if you look at the COLA, cost of living adjustments, that people like on social security.
Sure.
Get. I'm gonna run the numbers, but it feels like it's somewhere around 30%.
Okay.
Hey, my numbers, let's think of my numbers.
Yeah. Yeah, and, and most people on my social security, like I said, would, earlier would not be affected by this, right?
No, I'm just saying, if you're looking at, and remember, this is not a mandated thing. One way of looking at it, maybe not the way, but just to consider the, some, either P, P, CIP, CBI, or the COLA. So you don't, you don't want us to take any action tonight, right?
I would like you guys to take some action tonight, yes, I would like you guys to vote for us to, to make a motion for us to change our ambulance billing rates to the proposed rates.
Whether it's required by the state or not?
Correct. And I will say, once she does sign the bill, just so you guys know, over the next two years, they're gonna be doing another ground am, ground transport ambulance study, to make sure that this isn't, this is enough to actually make this suffice, or if it's too much.
Put your shot that nobody knows who the other towns are.
Yep.
Go back to that shot.
Sure.
How many towns already meet?
Or exceed?
Or exceed.
So it looks about two, two, two or three, so I would say two and a half, right? Cause some of these rates exceed.
Yeah, but the ALS one is exceeded only by a lower three, four, three.
ALS, ALS ones are only exceeded by, yeah, the lower three, correct. And our, our proposed rate change.
Does ComStar do billing for any of these other towns?
What's that?
Does ComStar do billing for any of these other towns?
Correct, yes.
They're probably looking at the same thing we are, they're probably gonna look at increasing the rate of.
Yep. So this would put us around the, you know, top four.
But it's a good chance everybody else is going to.
Everyone else, yeah, I would imagine is scrambling right now to do the same thing, to make sure the rates match, yes. And if they're not, they're ignoring a large issue.
So what's this deal about 3% if we don't meet this? We can only, after a certain time.
So ComStar is concerned that, that Governor Ayotte's gonna say, okay, we'll sign the bill. But their concern is that they come back and say, we're gonna sign the bill, but we're also gonna set a cap on percentage increase.
But grow.
Correct. So their ComStar was, they just warned us cautiously to say, hey, if you guys don't look at making a large increase at this time, you know, say if you make a, a more cautious increase and keep it a little, a little bit smaller, is that, they said, we may get locked in at a 2% or 3% increase per year, and we don't know how long that would last. And where we're far behind currently, in, in what we could be, if the, like I said, if the, the bill is signed into law, they really could take us a long time to catch up.
Looks like everybody is just about the same.
Yep.
Except for the bottom five, about bottom six.
Yep.
Yeah, we're a little mid-pack, yeah.
Well, we're in a lower grouping.
Yep.
We're at the 1,200, and everybody else is going through 18, 20, 12, 19, 25, 28.
But you gotta think too, that if other towns are having this discussion, and they all vote to increase, and we would be the absolute lowest if we stayed where we are. I think I've heard enough about it. I suppose if you, I don't, if you present anything, we ought to give the public a chance to.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Speak on it, if there's anybody else.
I'll just put my notes here, so they can have a chance to speak. I'll leave that up.
If the, Tom, can you come to our microphone for a second, for a question?
The BLS, is it just, like I see, least expensive, is it still transporting, or, and what does that stand for?
So the, the BLS is basic life services.
Basic?
Basic life services.
Basic.
And it's still transporting, but it's transporting with minimal treatment. So this is typically what we'd call like, you know, basic vitals, meaning blood pressure, heart rate, oxygen percentage, blood sugar. And then BLS level interventions are as simple as oxygen through a nasal cannula, oxygen through a non-breather. They can do NPAs and OPAs. Typically though, I would caution if they, NPAs and OPAs are things that hold open your nares in your mouth. Typically, if somebody has an AMP or an OPA, that's only there for a little bit of time before that gets moved, and you move on to an ALS intervention. Splinting, so, you know, people with basic fractures, and like I said, vital signs monitoring. So this is basic level assessment, oxygen administration, and basic level medications, which include oral medications, Tylenol, Ibuprofen, things along those lines.
What happens if you show up and you don't transport?
There's no bill for that service. And that, that happens quite frequently, that we show up and don't transport.
That was gonna be my point, that there's no charge if they're not transported. Plus, I understand that if you transport a critical patient and they pass on.
Correct, we don't bill for that service, yeah, we don't bill for somebody who's passed on from care.
And if, if it's a mutual aid call?
Mutual aid, meaning in which fashion, so if we.
If another town comes, we go to another town.
Real quick description of mutual aid, I'm glad, actually, thank you Bruce for bringing that up, it's probably something I should have covered. I'll put that down on my yearly review. So mutual aid in a couple of different fashions. Paramedic intercepts the capital areas, so the compact that we're part of, through our dispatch, we have a fairly set rate, so everyone tries to keep their paramedic intercepts the same. So if an ambulance is at a BLS level and they need a paramedic for a higher level care, they'll call for, for example, say if Ware's at a BLS level, cause it's the second ambulance call, and we had a call company come in, and they're transporting, they told them for Hennecker for their paramedic to intercept. That means that Hennecker would drive over and their ambulance drop off their paramedic in ours, and their paramedic would do their care in our ambulance. We bill for the ambulance transport, Hennecker ambulance would bill us directly for a paramedic intercept that comes out of our yearly budget, we have a line item for that. Mutual aid runs are billed directly to the patient, so, example, I'm using towns as examples, if, if Hennecker was out and busy and we went to Hennecker for a transport, we would bill the patient directly, and Hennecker does not see anything out of that.
Would we bill that at our rate or Hennecker's?
We bill at our rate.
Okay.
Yep.
What's your mix of EMTs and paramedics in your E?
So we haven't, so our mix is we have an ALS provider on every day. So there's always an EMT and an ALS provider on this, on the first level.
On the first call.
On the first call, correct.
So you have four?
No, we have more than four, we have four paramedics currently, yes.
That's my question.
Yep. Open for one more, we have a job opening, if you know anybody.
You mean you got seven, you really go from three, so you're not full staff?
Correct.
So you pay part-time, or what do you call it?
Yeah, per diem, yep.
Anybody else out there, anything, you get something?
I hope, I hope I won't be needing the service, but, you know, getting closer. I got some very specific questions. One is, is our rates, the rates that are being proposed, based on a 325% increase in the Medicare?
Yes.
Or is it based on the cost of our service that is provided?
It's based on the 325% increase.
Which is a temporary rate, right? Just, yeah, that's just for 2007, 26 rather, cause in 27.
I'll let him answer, I don't believe so.
Well, I read, I read the Senate bill.
Oh, okay.
And it would appear that the commissioner, insurance commissioner is gonna have a study created and then come up with a specific rate in, for 27, 28, 28, 29. So everything that I've read indicates this is a temporary rate, is it not?
So this is for the next two years, at a minimum, they're gonna keep, conduct, so over the last four years, they conducted a ground ambulance transport study.
Right.
And what they decided on, what they settled on between, because there was two different proposed rates, so it was 200% of the Medicare rate, and there's 325% of the Medicare rate, they settled on 325% for the next two years. And they continue that ground ambulance transport study to see if it's enough to support the ambulance services.
Okay, see if it's enough. You, you increased the mileage rate by 95% roughly. How did you compute that?
We based it off the Medicare.
So my, my concern is, and it always has been, regardless of what the fees are, is that the fees are being established based on the cost of us to provide the service? In this particular case, it is not, right? It's being based on a number that's in 245.
Yeah, I would, I would look at it in two different ways, and I can understand your concern. Where we see an issue in, you know, I, I, I look at it from a, it still supports the cost of the ambulance service, from the aspect of, you need to replace your ambulances, and our ambulance costs have gone up dramatically over the past five years, and same with the fire equipment costs, right? That go, that due to go to some medical costs as well. So, in essence, yes, it still supports the cost in care for the ambulance. We're pushing our monitors out, our cardiac monitors out longer, our EMS stretchers out longer, our ambulances out longer, because we don't have the money coming into our capital improvement fund off, off of ambulance billing to replace those.
The other concern with using a, a revenue to go into a fund for that particular department to use is that, those fees could increase just to increase the base in that particular fund. I hope that's not the case here. But you also have an operating budget, right? I mean, you have an operating budget that covers a lot of these costs.
The operating govern, but budget covers the cost of the personnel, correct.
And materials.
And some materials, yep. Most of the material we get free through Concord Hospital.
Okay.
But yes, it does cover some materials, some ALS supplies and things like that, that we don't get.
Are we gonna increase the operating budget in support of this?
We're, just as last year, when we get, you know, voted back to default, we're still gonna propose an increase, increase in our operating budget, cause there's equipment. Our EMS material line item is frequently overspent, just cause they do the cost of those materials, and it's been default for such a, such a long time.
And these are just kinda shotgun questions, I guess. The reimbursement, it says, will or shall get reimbursed at 325%? Is, is this a cake or the tail wagging the dog? I mean, is the insurance company gonna say, oh, yep, no problem? No, even not, I doubt it, because they're probably gonna increase premiums for some of these. So there's a cost that you were talking about, the one-third, two-third, whatever, may go up, may go down, I don't know. And each insurer has different plans, so, some could be a higher deductible, some could be not. But if, if, if the state is requiring that you get reimbursed 325% of Medicare, which is basically a new rate, I'm assuming, right? Which is significantly higher.
Correct.
Than the current rate. The insurance company's gonna say, yeah, we're gonna cover 800, and there may be cost sharing, I know they're doing a balanced billing, but there's cost sharing, it's going, almost the same. That, who's gonna make up for that difference? Is it gonna be the consumer?
I, I, I can't speak for the insurance companies, right?
I understand that.
You know, I, I wish I could, I wish I could project on that. I think what's appropriate for me to do is speak to what our billing practices are gonna be and what we do.
Anybody that takes a BLS or BL, ALS one or two, goes to the hospital, you had a high deductible, that leads to their problem is gonna be the ambulance.
Yeah, like I said, I, I'm not, I don't wanna speak, I don't wanna speak out of turn.
I, I know, you're right, you're right, but there is a difference, there's a big increase hit here.
I can certainly understand your concern.
If I went, last week, okay, my, my insurance company may pay a significant amount, and I only may, may have to pay 200. But now what you're looking at, okay, is not 200, you may be looking at 800 to $1,000. It may be insignificant to you, but we're talking about a lot of people that are on welfare. So I, I, I'm.
People on welfare on Medicaid, they're gonna only get the Medicaid bill anyway.
I guess my point, I was trying to answer is. Statistically, it's rare.
On Medicaid, we'll get the Medicaid bill.
Statistically, if it's, it's rare, if you take a ride to the hospital.
If they're only on Medicare, right? I mean, do they, what if they have a supplement? Isn't that gonna kick in and say, hey? I mean, I, I'm, I'm sure I have somewhere, Medicare is buried somewhere underneath my, my, my health insurance plan. It's, it's not our primary, we don't use. It's not our primary, we don't use Medicare, right? We use another service. That service is gonna be billed, that insurer is gonna be billed a higher amount.
Sure.
And I understand you can't answer for the insurance company.
Yeah.
But from a practical standpoint, it would appear that not everything is gonna be equal for the, for the ratepayer, for the customers.
I can, like I said, I wish I had a great answer for you, sir. On that, I can't speak for the insurance companies, what their plan is gonna be to cover these costs. I would imagine it's raising premiums in some fashion, but like I said, I can't speak to that. What I have to speak to, and my concern, is that if we don't quickly change our ambulance billing rates, we're looking at a large deficit in our capital improvement plan.
That's, that's the thing. If the money was going into the general fund like it used to, I don't even think we'd be talking about it. But where the money is going...
And I would caution you that we need to talk about it, right? Because we're pushing, we're pushing equipment long beyond its lifespan.
I understand that, I understand. I was on the board when we made these changes, believe me.
Making sure you understand that.
If the money was going into the general fund for tax relief, we probably wouldn't be having this discussion, because it wouldn't impact the capital reserve fund. But now it is impacting the capital reserve.
It's still a tax relief, because you're not buying a $600,000 ambulance.
I understand that. You don't want to leave money on the table, is what you said. This is, this is a big increase. I mean, the insurance department in the state said, I'm just gonna read from this. Said that the, I gotta take my glasses off. Says the bills provisions are expected to increase health insurance premiums as carriers adjust to higher reimbursement rates for ambulance services. So I mean, this is gonna trickle down, you know, to...
Without a doubt.
To citizens, right?
Those are gonna be statewide, they're not gonna adjust...
They're gonna give them a town to wear rate.
Right, it's gonna be a statewide insurance adjustment rate. They're not gonna say, well, we're adding up their ambulance rates, we're not gonna increase where residents' insurance rates.
Yeah, I understand that. There's also provisions in the bill for the localities to negotiate independently with the insurance carriers. It doesn't sound like you have a choice here.
Sure, so I think what you're referring to is we have an ability to contract with some of the private health insurers. What I would say is that it's not their first day when it comes to contracting, and they're very good at making sure to keep those rates low when they keep them contracted. So that was a practice during balanced billing that allowed us to be like, kinda locked in at a set rate, very similar to Medicare or Medicaid, with private insurers like Anthem, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield, along those lines to try to lock in. But the insurance company's gonna win on that contract. And the last time we were contracted was very, very difficult for us to get out of that.
How much additional revenue do you think you're gonna get from this? I couldn't hear.
Yeah, so the, you know, this is a rough math, is looking at almost a $200,000 increase per year into our capital improvement plans and the special revenue fund.
And you don't know how much the insurance company are gonna cover the cost of the service? You don't know that. They're probably not gonna cover 100%.
They're gonna be required to pay per the text in the law at 325% of the Medicare rate, correct?
They are, but they could, they could deflect some of that, right, to, to the insurer. They do it all the time, I see it happen all the time in the medical field. You get a bill for, you send a bill out for $800, insurance company says, well, we're covering 600, you...
That's balanced billing, which is actually part of this bill is being ended.
And then, and then it's cost share. And then you have to, you have to cover the difference, so...
Yeah, but what he's saying is, is that ending.
That act of...
I understand the balanced billing is, it's still cost sharing that the insurance companies can kick in.
Yeah, the only thing that can cost share is your deductible and your copays. You can't decide, you gotta pay more than that.
So that means you're not gonna be getting back what you're billing?
No, I'm not, maybe I'm explaining this incorrectly. So the act of balanced billing, so, which we talked about during the PowerPoint. So an example, an ALS level one call currently through the private insurer, if we send them a bill for $1,490.68, they can come back and say, no, we're gonna reimburse it $800, right? And send the remaining balance to the consumer. That is, that is, part of this bill is to end that act by the insurer. The other part of this bill that we, it's very minute, but I think it's a, it's a point to touch on, is some of the private insurers will send the check directly to the patient instead of to the ambulance service. It's a very small percentage, it's less than 1% of our ambulance billing. But we do see an issue here or there with the patient getting that check first and then not reimbursing the service for that.
So what's the difference with cost sharing then? You send out the same bill to the insurance company, they're not gonna do the balanced billing. I think it's actually out in, in some of the New Orleans states, Massachusetts being one of them. So tell me what the difference would be in your reimbursement?
Well, I'm trying to make sure I understand your question.
Well, if, if, cost sharing is something that insurance insurers can still do and will do, whether it's a...
I think that's just relabeling balanced billing. I think it's just giving it a different name.
It's in 245, they talk about that. But anyway, the question is, if you send an invoice out, the balanced billing is gone, you send an invoice out to an insurance company, what is the difference in terms of what your revenue would be between that and balanced billing?
So approximately, currently, about $200,000 a year.
An increase of $200,000.
Correct.
Of revenue?
Of revenue into the special revenue fund.
Are you asking how often a patient gets a bill and then just doesn't pay it?
No, no, no. If in balanced billing, according to what we said, the insurance company say we're covering 800, you then, the town or ComStar would balance, would bill...
Every time that it goes to a private insurer, it goes to balanced billing. So for our ALS level one calls, which are our highest level, you know, every time you see in the 15% ranges that are our private insurers, our Blue Cross Blue Shields, they will do balanced billing every time.
So the balance of that, of your bill is gonna go to the insurer? Is that what he's telling me?
Correct, the insurer is required to pay that balance.
Okay. Now, you're doing away with that, right? That's what this 245 does, balanced billing, I think so.
Correct, yep.
Opening statements.
Yep.
So now, what is the difference in terms of how that bill is gonna be distributed? Is it gonna, isn't there still gonna be a balance to the, to the consumer?
No.
It's gonna equal the difference between what was billed and what the insurance is paying?
I think the loophole is, today, if you have some type of insurance company which will have $3,000 deductible, you're gonna pay the whole thing, because you got a deductible, right? So you satisfy your deductible, let's say they take enough ambulance rides to satisfy your deductible, then the insurance company get it all. That's just the way the insurance is set up.
Well, different plans, but that would be one of them.
I'm just saying, most non-Medicare, non-Medicaid are set up, nobody gets 100% medical these days. Okay, they're all with some form of deductible.
Exactly. So what are we expecting, how did you compute the $200,000 insurance number? Is it based on...
Yeah, so I took a, yeah, so I basically took a average of each run over the past four years. And I took the difference of what we're currently billing and what the 325% of the Medicare rate is. And I multiplied it to the average for each run, and then I added all those columns together. And so like I said, it's a ballpark figure, so I don't wanna like, you know, stand on solid ground forever, ballpark in the neighborhood of $200,000. That we're currently, if we don't bill at that rate, right, that we're gonna see that not come in. And that's money that by law, they're gonna be required to pay. Because if you ask ComStar, our ambulance billing company, they're very cautious, and rightfully so, that they're not going to give you averages or what they expect to see for your income. Because we do have to look at call, call levels fluctuate in levels of treatment, our call levels also fluctuate in numbers. So, you know, ComStar is still a business, so they have to be very cautious about what they, what they provide you for numbers.
Insurance companies, obviously. They'll try and deflect as much as they can, right? And I'm concerned that that deflection is gonna hit the insured in more ways than one. And that would also be an increase in premiums.
I think that question is actually better off for the Senate or the House versus here.
What do we hear, what is the public, the public here, is to accept your proposal?
Yep, the public here is to...
Which is based on 325%.
Correct, right. But the concern of it going to the consumer is a better question, I think, based for the Senate versus myself.
Oh, I know, but you did, you did come up with an additional amount of money that you thought you'd be getting in revenue in support of the capital project, right? Which is a kind of a guess.
Like I said, best guess, yep.
I wish you'd think about it some more, but that's my personal opinion, it's just such a big hit. I mean, just a 95% hit in the transportation mileage cost. It's significant. And the cost of diesel has actually gone down. If you look at our operating budget this year, the proposed budget reduced the cost of diesel. So I don't know what percentage of that number represents fuel. Or your mileage.
Mileage is based off ambulance and ware and terror, not fuel. Fuel is part of our line items.
Tom Claude, what to absorb?
It's a lot.
Question, you said the majority, just to give a comparison, the majority of your calls are the ALS one?
Correct.
And so an ALS one call, typically what would that 325% of the, of the Medicare billing be? Do you have any idea there?
I do, I just wanna check the number, just to make sure, I don't wanna misquote myself. Sorry, I just don't wanna put a number out that... All right, so an ALS level one is, at 325% of the Medicare rate is $1,770.18.
Stay right here, while I just...
I'll just move to the side.
Just trying to straighten this out in my head. I probably had to come see you.
It's a lot, yeah.
But comparing that to what you're billing and what, what ends up on the shoulders of the consumer, does that mean that the private insurance company would have to bill that amount? Or would they be able to choose another number, some percentage of it?
Excuse me. So the numbers that we're proposing, so the 325% of the Medicare rate that we're proposing, increasing our rates to, to match, the private insurer would be required, like I said, once Governor outsigns it into law, to pay at that rate. So if we, if we bill at $1,490.68 to a private insurer, they would be required to reimburse us at the $1,490.68.
It shouldn't break even.
Correct. And like I said, I can't speak, and I will not speak, to the cost of the consumer on what's gonna switch to, on their private health insurance, I can't speak to that. I would, I would imagine, I think if anybody with common sense or, you know, some life, it just knows if their costs increase, we're gonna see a cost increase. I understand that, I have private health insurance as well, so I get it. I can't speak to what the health, the insurance companies are willing to do.
I'd like to make a motion, we accept the numbers as proposed by Ware Fire to match 325% of the Medicare rate. If it's signed into law.
I should do against that table, so that everybody knows what the difference is.
I'll put that back up. I didn't close yet.
I'll amend my motion.
I'm just saying it's...
That's what you want.
Correct, I appreciate it.
I'm not sure if we can do a contingent on it inside, I suppose maybe we could put that in there, but I think we're voting tonight.
Yeah.
To accept that she signs it into law.
Correct, so we are...
I'll amend my motion.
We are matching the 325% rate, whether or not that gets signed into law or not. So I just wanted to clarify on that.
So I'd like to make the motion, I'll amend it to state, make a motion that we accept the suggested EMS billing rates for 2025, the BLS at $1,490.68, ALS one at $1,770.18, ALS two at $2,562.14, and mileage at $29.25 per mile. I'll second.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to ask questions to try to figure out my point earlier. If somebody, how many people drive, how many people take a ride to the ambulance to the hospital and never get seen?
How many?
Dismissed. How many people just drive over to Concord or Manchester and just get dismissed without any bill from the hospital?
Without any bill from the hospital? Well, they would have to turn down treatment from the hospital.
Let's say, how many wanted treatment that didn't need treatment? I'm just trying to get across, almost everybody takes a ride, gets a bill.
Correct.
What's a reasonable bill for just showing up at the, at the hospital? Just a reasonable one.
Yeah, so everybody who's transported and treated, right?
Pick a number, is it $4,000 to be in the emergency room?
I don't know what the emergency bill is, I...
Well, let's, let's say, say your deductible is $4,000. You show up, and then I'm gonna just look, I'm gonna run a bunch of tests. So if your deductible is $4,000 in your insurance, okay? You show up there, you're gonna get a pretty significant bill that's gonna blow through your deductible, right?
I definitely understand where you're coming from, like I said...
And this charge is immaterial to the, to the patient. But if he has a deductible, he just takes a ride, and the only thing he's gonna get charged on his insurance is $1,700. He's gonna pay the $1,700, okay? Because he has to meet his deductible before he gets the bill, assuming his insurance doesn't cover ambulance, okay? So I mean, this is kind of a non-circular logic that was going on. So almost every time somebody goes to the hospital, they're gonna show up, the doctor's gonna look at them, nurse gonna do something to them, get tests and all that, and the number goes way out of whack. I don't know how many insurance companies, private insurance companies or corporate cover ambulance rides 100%. I don't know if there are, I think it goes against the deductible, which is immaterial to the total cost. It was an interesting conversation, but it's not, the reality is practically zero, unless you jump out of the ambulance, says, thanks for the ride, I'll come home, you know?
That doesn't happen, it happens very often.
But I think, I think the question is...
You're still getting an ambulance bill for that.
I think the question, you will get the bill, but if you have deductible on your insurance, and the doctors say it's necessary, it'll be applied to your deductible.
I'd submit that's irrelevant to the conversation, because we're only talking about where's charged.
Yeah, I just, and like I said, I don't wanna speak for what the hospital bill's gonna be, right? I'm only here to speak for what we're proposing for ambulance billing rates.
I think we kinda have to look at it the other way around. Basically, Medicaid is gonna be, Medicare's gonna be paying one-third of your billable rate to a maximum of whatever it was at 500... one-third of your billable rate to a maximum of whatever it was at 5, 544.
Correct.
And so this is actually designed to stop towns from charging more than that to it because-
Yeah, I think it's a twofold. With the, the initial intent of SB 245, right, was more geared towards your private ambulance companies, your smaller ambulance companies that are not tax funded, because they're, you would, you were seeing a lot of those in Delosio Ambulance, and Keane is a great example of that, right? I'm from that area, and was a part of that, is that because of the reimbursement rates that they were getting, they were unable to maintain their services and costs, and their ambulance folded. So the initial intent of this was to end the act of balanced billing, because no one likes to have a surprise bill at home that they didn't know about. Also, right, because I think they have health insurance that their ambulance bill is covered, right? And they figure out that their ambulance bill, they just kinda guess and say, "Well, today we feel like paying $600." The other intent with this is to make sure that ambulances were fairly and adequately reimbursed for their services. And that's where the argument kinda came at the two different versions of the law, the 200% and 325%, hence why they pushed towards the 325%, because they saw that as a greater level of reimbursement for the ambulances for their costs.
If you took your $1,200-
Correct.
From 2018.
Yes.
And you, I don't know the exact number, because I don't have the cost of living, but I'm thinking it's close to 30%.
Uh, the increase?
So what's 30% of $1,200? 360. Add 360 to $1,200, what do you got? 1560. What do you get close to? $1,700. So this is almost, is within shouting distance of being the $1,700. $100 difference, if 30%. I think 30% is close to the numbers, because I guess I gotta look. But I know prior calculations for five years ending in 2022, it was 22.6% for five years. That makes it 18, and then you go add three, add a few more to it, cost of living, you're getting up there. So these rates aren't that much further. Do it real time, but I don't have the information.
We have a motion to second, and we have a discussion.
All, all in favor of the motion to increase the billing rates?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, that was so painful. Well, I do understand, you know, the concern, you're gonna drive up insurance-
I gotta tell you, ambulance billing is a tough, it's a tough, it's tough not to crack in, in a small amount of time. You know, and even after leaving for a weekend vacation and then coming back, it was like, okay, give my head back as a game, you know? It's, it's very quick.
There's, there's gonna be concern at town meeting, I'm sure.
Sure.
Um, you know, 'cause there always has been what happens when we buy everything new, and now there's just endless money stacking up. Was proved with the inflation of things that, that hasn't happened, so I guess if that ever does happen, then we can-
I think what you're gonna see is, yes, you're gonna see a larger increase in our revenue. That's, that's without a doubt. But I think what you'll see out of that, the positive side of that, that people may not think about, right? Because they don't think about is that, that the, the equipment will turn over on a higher frequency.
Right.
You know, we're not pushing our cardiac monitors outside of their 10-year window, we're not pushing that EMS stretcher, you know, EMS stretchers, we're pushing 25 years now, it's, you know, and that's, you know, there's equipment that we'd like to buy that we can't buy, because we would say, "Okay, look at 2027, we have to save for our next ambulance." You know, and there's, so I think what they'll see is, yes, you will see a larger fund balance, but out of that is gonna become better equipment that's in your ambulance, that's restocked and recycled at a faster rate. Your fire truck's gonna get restocked and restocked at a faster rate, and we'll see less means. It's, it's a catch 22 of either side of this. We're gonna see an improvement.
Yep.
Only things didn't cost money.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, guys.
Bye, chief.
Thank you.
Yes, I will.
Tony?
We had the same one, except it broke.
So, Tony, do some, so you guys got a list, I think you were here last week, of potential discussions for tax deed. So, um, potential exercise is, there's some that you'll pay for tax deed, but there's some that you waived because you don't take the tax deed.
So what I have here is all the properties that are up for deeding. You either sign it, you don't, which means if you sign it, you don't want it. If you don't sign it, that means that we're gonna take it for deed, because the property, there's no names on here, it's all-
You mean, when you say take it for deed, it means go to auction?
So, no, so we end up deeding it to the town at Ware.
Oh, okay.
And then you have three years, you have to, the owner has the right to buy it back within three years?
So they're all here, you guys can look them up. I have a copy, sir.
So, not where that criteria would be, but not.
So in years past, we have not taken it, and the reason, money's not quite certified, yes, but we're going through the motions. And sorry, I didn't mean to take over, but, so the reasons you might not, for instance, if you take a property that's in a mobile home park, there's an opportunity that you would be subject to the monthly park rent fees. So in years past, we have not taken those, just because you could be subject to the annual, the monthly lot rent fee.
But, but, um-
You could also be whatever they've left behind to remove, fix, liable for whatever's there.
Well, without knowing what jewels are left, you know, how would we know enough to do anything tonight?
Well, so I gave you, we gave you the list with the property location, of which would have given you an indication of where they are and how much was owed. There is, I'll just say, 174 South Stark is the mobile home park. 194 Buckley Road is all seasons camp round.
But what, just so I get it clear, if we take no action tonight, don't sign it, what happens?
That means you don't take them for taxes.
Then you don't take them for taxes, and then-
So we still have it as accruing taxes?
They still own it, you still approve.
Okay. Correct.
So the top two are the mobile, or camp round?
They, it's all, it goes in order, so there-
So I'm just saying that if, if you have, 174 South Stark is typically the South from a mobile home park, 194 Buckley Road is all seasons camp round. Seven-
So there's a couple.
22 compensated road is Sugar Hill Manor. You do have some that are not, and there's a couple on here that we already have payment arrangements with, are they in the pile?
No, she's, yes, she is in the pile. It's further, there's a, um, there's two, 28 and 32 Merrill Road.
She comes in religiously with a payment arrangement.
So if we sign these, are we liable for what hazardous waste is there?
If you sign them, that means you're telling us not to deed them to us.
Right.
So we only wanna sign the ones tonight that we don't want?
Don't want.
Okay. But what's the criteria for not wanting? That's what I'm trying to get at.
You wanna be subject to evictions, you wanna be subject to lot rent every month.
You mean the town?
Correct.
Well, that's what I asked, the liability.
For instance, the, these two would have lot rents. So do we wanna take them for that amount and then be subject to possibly-
Possible monthly lot rent.
Was that $190?
No, no, that's probably others.
This amount, $190?
What is, what's the map and lot?
Uh, 407 38 19.
19, yeah.
Yeah, so that's, that's what he-
That's the tax dollar you take it for, but then you're gonna be subject to the monthly lot rent.
Just so I get it straight, the whole picture. We don't get all the money of a sale.
No.
We, that money goes after expenses too.
To the owner.
So we have to recoup the-
You have to recoup your taxes plus 15%. So if you waive taking them, the owner still is responsible for the park rent and the continued interest.
Back taxes.
Back taxes.
They didn't bring my list, 'cause that, that is what I'm interested in.
I have an extra one.
I'm not interested in taking one like this one.
Right, that's-
But I just wouldn't know without sitting here for an hour, I didn't know if you could help me out.
Do you want us to sort them?
I personally would like that.
How do you want, how do you want them sorted?
You want them taken away by the-
By ones that would have, I guess-
That would have lot rent?
Yeah.
Ones, ones without park rent?
Well, with park rent, I guess, but-
Okay.
Either way, it'd be the same thing, I guess.
So you're only looking at-
I'm interested in taking the ones, I'm not, you-
Okay.
So the property locations is on the far column, that tells you when there's the 174, the 194. There are some pieces of property that don't have those.
There's quite a few, I'm sure.
Uh, I see three. Four, I see four.
That are in parks?
That are not.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there's quite a few that are in parks.
Yeah, I see four.
People wondering these two?
Yeah. They-
So these are the ones-
These are not in parks.
Those are not.
Not in parks.
There's four of them, yeah. Can they all be notified, certified by that? I mean, I can do sign them or not sign them.
So, so I get, those are the only four that are not somewhere we need to pay park rent.
Correct. So if you don't want the ones that you have to pay for, then you need to sign all these.
I think I said the other thing. So you sign all those, but those two?
What, what's the rest of the board's opinion on it? I guess that's kinda my down-the-middle, cut-and-dry opinion, I guess. Kind of a-
Can you tell how many years back taxes?
It's on the back of those deed waivers.
If you decide not to take, this is my thought.
Initially, why?
Initially.
So on the back of those, you can see-
If you decide not to take them.
I correct it, so some of them how?
Then the people know you're not gonna take them.
Minimal, some of them have more than.
Then they're not real anxious to pay taxes.
Because they only got one?
Yeah.
So why is it taking action on one?
I get your point there, that.
What's the year?
So if you-
There has to be a point where we say-
Right.
All the way.
Okay, that's enough.
So if you take them-
2021?
Yeah.
And then-
So they're missing year 2021, they haven't paid that, but they paid everything else up to that?
Person that has the lot rent.
That would be the assumption, yeah.
The money is the person that has the lease.
This is land, this is just land, it's not, it's a parcel, but yeah, it's 2021.
What's the perks?
Haven't paid, says 2021?
Management's thoughts on the town not paying park rent.
Well, we have that bigger discussion with them, because-
That might be a discussion to have.
Some of the discussions is completely not.
So she's only, she missed that one year?
Yeah.
And some of them know.
This is like fiber of.
Mm-hmm.
So we could be subject to lot rents, but that doesn't mean they'll charge us that.
Right. And you've got some that you already own it, you haven't been.
So I think that's a respect to have already.
I think we need to have a representative of work.
Right, but I'm just saying, tonight, if you took those without the park, you'd get a bigger discussion. Because sometimes they're not, they're part, with the park rent, they're just, they're not so powerful.
Because they know we're not in really much.
Correct.
I would think as far as she gave us between the, the amount and other, we could probably take those. We don't have to sign them, those ones we don't-
Those ones you don't sign.
What about these now?
Just being discussed, two signed, there are much larger lists.
Oh, okay.
The two sides, right here.
I have one energy.
Okay.
So what, what are your thoughts?
What would be the pile that you, you'd want us to sign?
What's this one?
This is, is this a? This is the pile that-
Did you see this?
That's, that, that's a pile that would have lot rent.
That would have, they got, all have some form of a lot rent.
I don't know if I'm as concerned about that as I am about this.
Right.
We sign this with-
It could be possible, I'm not saying you are, 'cause we already have some that we-
I'm not even as concerned about that.
For instance, you've got a couple on there that-
Payment arrangement.
That you took.
Payment arrangement.
Jack, you had a couple on there that you took-
So those are okay.
Two years ago, that we're adding into the option.
If they're, make them go to payments.
Right, yeah, right. I feel the same way.
What are you feeling?
If they can go to a payment arrangement, I don't feel comfortable taking them.
Well, there's a couple that have already been through payment arrangements and have not.
No, but what's it on, on arrangement?
Oh, on arrangement.
Oh, yes, I have one, I have one that is on that, and she comes religiously every two weeks.
I wouldn't wanna take that.
No, no, she's not on that, you don't have a paper for her to take that.
So everybody's been given notice that this is subject to us tonight?
Right, I do, I do have one, she came in today, but they have no payment arrangements, she's not consistent with her payments, and I just-
It's fully in a circle.
Yeah, and I, I just, there's just, there's a big amount, and I don't see any form of catch-up. And they've had a payment arrangements, and it's just fault, it's not kept up, I don't- Yep.
Yes.
Yeah, and one of them, she's not an owner either, is she?
No, they had, no.
You can't, if the payment arrangement's wrong, the owner-
Right. Well, the owner has to come in to make a payment arrangement.
The owner has-
He knows.
Okay.
I know. I'm just clarifying.
Okay, yeah, no.
They haven't been, the owners have not been in the make a payment arrangement, right?
No.
I mean, trust me, it isn't, it isn't the, the town's great benefit, or any benefit, to, to deed them anyway. I mean, I learned that with that temporary garage. We was left a mess, we had to clean it up. And after all that work and all expenses, when it sold at auction, previous owner got what was left over after the bills. The town doesn't make any money. No, I know, you don't have to make money. No, but to be clear, everybody might be watching, 'cause you do hear that.
Yeah, this is the worst part of being a tax collector.
So. You don't have to be sure that everybody else in town pays their taxes, too. No, I understand why we're doing it, I just think a lot of people see that, oh, you got a garage and a house, well, that isn't how that works. And I didn't until I was involved in cleaning up a mess, that's not how it works, but.
So the question is, do any of these have liens against them?
Yes, they all do.
So why don't we just wait for it to go bankrupt? They pay us the balance of what they owe us sometime in the future? Most interest.
No, no, so they've got liens, tax liens, they don't necessarily have a mortgage lien.
Yeah, I have one from 2018.
Oh, I said if they had mortgages.
No.
You mean they're making the, making the mortgage? Oh, so, okay. I'm just trying to figure this out, 'cause sooner or later, the bank will take it and pay us the-
Most banks will let it get to this point, they'll come down right in time.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
So you have a choice.
And we got three.
You don't sign and deed all, or you selective in signing, and I'm sure on this, I, I think that you probably should have a bigger conversation with some of the directors of these groups, because I'm not gonna say that they're not getting paid either, but, you know, they're, they're just gonna continue, we've got someone since 19-
Is there a statutory date? Do we have to do this by?
Um, but do you-
It's not, because we can't roll them into this option yet.
We can't roll them into this option, but I do-
You gotta wait three years after.
Correct, but I do have to send them a letter, so that they can, that they know they're going to be deeded, and it has to go out by the 21st.
That, that's the stat, the 21st of this year or next year?
Of this year. Of this year, sorry, of next month.
August, August twenty.
August twenty-first, and then I deed them September, the end of September.
And that's an annual thing, you did that.
So if you decide you're gonna take them, you have to let them know that you're going to take them. Not necessarily it's gonna be done. And if not, you waive the other ones, or you just wanna move ones, four of them, and we can talk about it after.
I. Why don't we just talk to the park managers? I think it'd be more, yeah, I, I, I think. I think it'd be all right with signing all the ones in the parks, and we'll talk to park manager.
I think we need to have a bigger discussion about that.
So if we, so if we waive them, or.
If you waive all of those, and then don't waive those, she knows the action that we have to take. And then I think you have a bigger discussion with some of the parks' board members, as to how we could work together.
Yep.
I think that makes most sense.
Okay, so you, so don't sign those, and then all of the big pile that James has needs to be signed.
And James does the signature process.
So we don't think of all, we just sign them.
Don't give us signatures. So can you move, so you wanna waive, or you want to give them tomorrow for the mailbox?
Yeah, that's fine, as long as I need, your names are all on it, and they all need to be signed, please.
You took everything else, right?
I have everything right here.
So the ones that you wanna sign, you can, I'll make sure you take them on your mailbox.
Okay, does anybody have any questions else?
There's one?
There's two copies.
Oh, just, just sign one?
Just one?
Yep, I did two, just in case there was a mistake, so. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Pedro, nice.
Guess we can pass on the horse shit, huh?
Well, so.
Means all right to everybody else if we kind of meander on while we're signing, or you wanna wait?
What was the question, sorry?
We, can we move along as we're signing the?
So I was asked to put this on, um, after, um, there was a meeting. And I was asked to put it on for discussion, and I've also been reached out to a couple of times by a gentleman that was the, the second, the, the second time we bid was the only bid, which was the twenty-six thousand fifty.
Yes.
I don't wanna keep either one stringing along, but what do you wanna do?
So my understanding is, they didn't want to go back and pay?
I was asked to put it on for a discussion, um, and I did follow up with the Walker Company, which I forwarded to you all. And the Walker Company, the bid was dated after they were due.
They aren't compliant, then.
They were, the print date, or the bid date was on seven sixteen.
They're not compliant, and they missed the date.
It is, and I, I thought that, I thought the direction that we'd given Sherry last time was to find out from the group if they want, because they had, it was up to twenty-five thousand, we need like another sixteen hundred or something. So we need another grand from them, and she was gonna ask that, so I, I don't know.
I didn't get that out at all, so I just put it on the agenda for the next meeting, and I did.
So.
But the other one is not compliant.
Yeah, it doesn't, doesn't count, because it wasn't in.
So the only thing that's in motion is twenty-six thousand.
Which we awarded already, so it's up to them if they want them to do the work or not.
So what do I tell the gentleman that's asking? Do we don't have the money?
That's, that's what the question.
Which was the guy we picked?
The guy that you picked, his twenty-six thousand fifty dollars, he's asking if it's been ready to go.
I, I guess that today we'd say no, I mean, that was, that was in their wheelhouse, that's what we'd asked Sherry that night.
I'd write a, for people, write a letter saying, what's, what are your decisions, or we're gonna cancel it, to, to the, um.
And circle the side.
Because, put it, put it in writing, so they have to, we cancel, and they come back and say, we wanted it.
Unless my memory is wrong, it was left to Ms. Burdick to go back to their.
That's correct.
Commission to ask for that other sixteen hundred, whatever it was, thousand fifty bucks, yeah, yeah, and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, it was left.
We said, we would've, we would've probably said yes, but we, we, she told us we couldn't, because she didn't have the money. So that bid was rejected at that point.
So we didn't, we didn't reject it, I think we asked, we asked them if they would.
Okay, well, it was postponed then, the, the acceptance was postponed.
All right, so we didn't accept it at all, even, okay, yeah.
We didn't accept it, because we were told we don't have that money.
What's today's date?
It was on the historical.
Yeah, it was on.
Commission to figure out their money.
Oh, I remember it, too.
Actually, it was a thousand twenty-two dollars and fifty-two cents.
Right, yeah. And I thought.
Just the top one.
That tonight was going to be her coming back here telling us whether or not she got approved for that.
And the what?
Where we could actually approve the bid or not.
That's what I know.
Well, the answer, what I was asked was to put it on for a discussion.
I don't know if we have anything to discuss.
We don't.
We can't.
But we need to follow up, or you want me to follow up with a letter to the store, saying, asking this, this status?
To say, do you want it to twenty-six or not, it's a binary issue.
The, the other bid doesn't count, it didn't come in right.
Yeah, it couldn't do.
That's a good way to end up in the lawsuit.
Right, then you can do consent agenda, then I'm like, you can just read it.
Okay, yeah.
And then, and then I'll just take it from, and somebody's done. So we got in the mail of signing.
That's all right.
So just gotta read the consent agenda, P A dash sixteen, oh. Am I reading Naomi, or is it?
Consent agenda, P A sixteen.
Yeah, that's it?
That's all.
Consent agenda is P A dash sixteen form and signatures.
We're watching signing, I think you can listen as I move through.
Yep, go ahead.
Um, so, a, at the beginning of mine, I just checked off what we've already taken care of, which, um, is everything until we get down to the R F P for the building department, community software. Beth shared that with me, and I believe you all were going to, Bruce, you can correct me if I'm wrong, if you guys were going to, there was a couple changes made to the R F P, was that to everybody? For the software.
Yeah, I'll tell them, she said that everybody, I don't, I don't recall saying that.
Right, you need to know what, you need to know what you're telling them.
Yes. I didn't send, the, the review that I sent, I just sent back to Beth.
So I need to email all of you. So then, um, James had reached out to me today, I'll do that next time, James had reached out to me today with the update for health insurance, because it was made a discussion during budget season. And Beth has solicited quotes from several different people in regards to what we have for coverage, what we have for people, what we have for plans. She's met with them, solicited quotes, she's only got one back at the time, um, but we're a July first renewal, so she was looking at maybe doing it for January. So nothing's gonna change between now and July, but it is on the radar for, but just wanted to, to know that.
Well, we have gotten one back.
We got one back, yes.
So you, so we select one out of the packages?
Yeah, so she solicited with several different people, um, and, you know, again, there was a house still going around about some changes, um, but she, I think there was two or three people that came to her. One is since gone out of business, so he's, that's not what I want. But it's gonna be for the budget season, you'll see what she's got presented. Um, the second public hearing, we have to have a local community forum for the River Road Bridge. Uh, Jason and I and the engineer scheduled for August seventh, here in the town office. We used the town hall last time, it was only nine people, I'm not gonna set the town hall and do all that for nine people, um, if we get thirty in this room, perfect.
What's the, what's the budget for the whole bridge? It was one point five.
Well, we haven't put out the, the cost, no, I think it was one point, around one point six, but we did a phase of it, and now we have to have another public meeting before we can go out to put the project out. So we're gonna have a public meeting next week, next Thursday.
But my, my question really is, we've got a certain amount of money, twenty thousand dollars.
You have the twenty percent of the one point.
With interest.
Mm-hmm.
And so is the bridge gonna come in?
I don't know until we put the bids out.
So this could be just, we don't have that money.
Right, well, so we have to have public input a second time around before we get to the engineering part, so. That's on next week, if you're interested, I'll post it, by the chance that three of you might show up here, just I'll post it, so maybe you might attend. Benji and I discussed the, um, further schedule for the rest of, I'm gonna give you to take, is, um, is to, our plan goes, the next two go kind of together. Is August, September, October, and November is, I gave you through the end of the year, but, um, the proposal would be, I know you talked about second and fourth. So August, you do second and fourth, September, you do second and fourth, but when you flip to October, there's five Mondays. So I was asking for a change to do the sixth, because the thirteenth is a holiday, so if we just do six and twenty of October, and then starting in November, we go every Monday, and December, every Monday. And our plan tentatively is the next line, it's suggested, not finalized, eleven, three, um, with Beth was gonna do default total and revenue. And then looking at maybe the tenth at the police, eleven seventeenth fire, and the twenty-fourth D P W, that's all proposed, we haven't talked about that, and I haven't squeezed in C I P yet, but. To go with what we talked about is, unless you wanna go back to weekly in October, but you've already got a holiday, so.
We might as well shoot for biweekly, we haven't done biweekly yet, so. We've averaged two and three on the weeks off, so.
So I just threw that out there, because it's easier, I'm a visual person, it's got the holidays, so I, and I marked only, you can mark whatever you want, put on your itinerary if you like. For your rescue meetings.
Sure.
Um. I forwarded you also, um, something that was, Mr. Butler had shared with me, that free speech tip, please comment in public meetings, just for you to read. And, I think I got everything, that's all I have, I didn't touch the bottom, because that's always gonna be addressed, but the top is, the top. Unless you have any questions. So I will, from my there, is take and share with you the email that was for the R F P for the building permission. She's already got four people interested in it. So we'll share that, Bruce, I don't know, right, you're gonna see it with a strike through, I'll share that. And then if we can on the eleven, just say you're okay, we'll put it out, you know, if you get too bad, too, too, two weeks. Other than that, I'm, I have to offer.
All right. Just move on to manifests. I moved to order the treasurer to sign the payroll and account payable checks dated July thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, is included in the following manifest. Payroll, ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-three cents, which is weekly and monthly payroll. Accounts payable, manifest, one hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents. Where school accounts payable, manifest, five hundred thousand. John Stark accounts payable, manifest, four hundred thousand, for a total of one million, one hundred and twelve thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars, seventy-four cents. The following manifest were previously ordered to sign at the July fourteenth, twenty twenty-five board of selectmen meeting. Payroll manifest, eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars, ninety-three cents, check dated seven, twenty-four, twenty-five. And accounts payable manifest, thirty-six thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars, seventy-two cents, check dated seven, twenty-four, twenty-five. As there is no select meeting scheduled for August fourth, twenty twenty-five, we further move to order the treasurer to sign payroll checks dated August seventh, twenty twenty-five, estimated to be about ninety thousand. Furthermore, to order the treasurer to sign up to the amount of ninety-five thousand for accounts payable that cannot wait until the next scheduled board, next scheduled meeting. Reports and actual check amounts will be reported to the board of selectmen by inclusion on the manifest memo at the next scheduled meeting. Yep, I have a second for you to call that.
Second.
Nobody has anything to add to it, in favor?
Yes.
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 I did send out two sets of minutes that were very short, late, um, those were your short, um, July ninth, and your April third, they were one pages. I'll get a chance to read the July twenty-third, because it's long. July ninth is this long.
You guys wanna do them?
Yeah, it's nice to keep up with them, so we can get very.
All right, we'll start July ninth.
All right. Make a motion to approve July ninth minutes as written.
Second.
Any comments on them?
Did you, you said?
Second. My, my, my jack invitation isn't quite up to par yet. If you can, just move away from your microphone.
All righty, all in favor then?
Aye, yes.
Abstentions?
Everybody said aye, so.
I abstained.
Oh, did you abstain, I thought I heard say, I, I, abstentions? All right. I thought I heard him say yes. All right, seven fourteen.
This isn't part of the motion, but, I mean, the, the minutes in here about the horse shit, say it all. About what was supposed to happen, but didn't happen.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion to, accept the July fourteenth minutes as written. Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Abstentions? All right.
July twenty-third?
Hmm, I just had on here, those.
Yeah, I know, but this, like, two sentences.
Yeah, you, you're, all right, do them in the evening hearing?
No.
Ah?
I'm settled.
All right, well, I'm gonna do July twenty-third then.
Make a motion to approve July twenty-third minutes as written.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
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 Abstentions against, all right. Do you have any committee updates?
Park, Park had, had one, had a meeting where we discussed how well everything is working. They got new, uh, new stickers for, for cars and for boats that are working out well, they put out, I'm trying to remember what the number was, but it was a significant number of, of, of boats already this year. So everything is, everything's going as expected.
Nice.
Been quiet, so I don't know if I want.
Yeah, I haven't heard much, good.
In a, in a more informal, um, poll, just looking on Facebook and things, it seems like everything mostly positive.
Good. Good. You got on that? Anybody else say anything?
Yeah.
I went to Boston for the cemetery one, but Naomi let him in, I guess.
I did. I worked out line.
The, the energy committee has been working on. There's a company that goes around, they're based out of Boston. And they build large municipal solar arrays. In different towns, and part of the grant conditions are, they have to give twenty percent of the power away, they make to other municipalities. And the other municipalities are. They, they can take as a. Part of this grant, a, a payment for a percentage of the power they use every year. But you have to identify the buildings where your, the power's allotted to, where. And have looked at where, and it amounts to about twenty-five hundred bucks a year. That Ware could get, but it's a, it's a twenty-year contract. And what, once you've enrolled a building in that list of, you're, where you're getting the power credits for, you, you can't do anything else with that building, you can't. Take advantage of something else, another program, I mean, it, it. And, and they, they represent that. The, the selectmen can just authorize entering into this contract, though I don't know that we can, I don't feel comfortable as a selectman for a three-year term, signing the town aware for a twenty-year commitment.
They'll think we have a building.
It could be, it could be all the buildings, I mean, but ob- obviously, we're also, they're also looking at the grant for the solar array on the safety complex, so you can't, you can't use that power, because that's covered, that would be covered under that solar array. But if something else came along, we got another grant for another solar array, like, at the transfer station for something, then we, we couldn't do it, because we're already under that contract.
Twenty-five hundred bucks seems like short money, I mean, small money to tie you up for.
Uh, exactly, that's my thought. And it's only fifty thousand dollars over twenty years? Yeah. Pass. I don't even know why we're discussing it.
If, if only others selected in the past have bought that signing, you know, multi-year contracts, because they're all been sitting on the board for three years, seven years.
You know, bigger cities have a lot, to buy a lot more power, get, get more money out of it, but I mean, for, for our power use, for the twenty, I'm, I'm just-
Or if you vote for it, you're going to stay on the board for twenty years.
Yeah. There you go.
I mean-
You said you want to stay on for the twenty years?
I might be here in spirit, but.
I think it's a neat idea, but I don't think it's, the, the scale is, is anywhere near.
No.
Doesn't sound reasonable. So, not, after the case of four against, I'm just, you know, that's what, it's on their plate.
Little bets, and next week, next month when you go, you can break the news to them, if they're not watching tonight.
I'll let them know.
Alright, do we have any correspondence or other business?
Well, I'm not sure if this fits, but I'm going to say it anyways, you can tell me if it's appropriate. Bruce and I kind of introduced ourselves to the larger departments, be it the red, blue, and white, and I guess we're calling the color codes these days, and, uh, the discussion was like on, uh, retention and attracting qualified talent, and almost two, almost definitely got together and wrote this script. It was probably the most important, at least for a couple, is short-term care, short-term, long, short-term care, and the ability to purchase long-term care. And so, I don't know what it costs, I mean, I can tell you right now, from my experience is, you don't want turnover on people, you don't have any corporate knowledge, you're always in the training mode, and they said we're probably in the ballpark for wages, competitive, but with other towns, um, they have better, better benefits in terms of, probably the most important in the short-term, because somebody gets hurt outside of work, so it's not, it's caught. Unless they have enough, what do they call it here, personal time? Okay, I don't know what it is. And unless they have enough of that to cover it, um, they're in trouble, they're out of paycheck. So, um, this probably benefits people who are probably married, more stable in the area than people who just need a job, move on. So, um, I don't know if it's possible to do a cost share, people don't want it, they just won't buy it, but, you know, maybe we'll cover seventy, seventy-five percent of the cost hypothetically, and they cover twenty-five, and if a kid says, I don't even want to throw a nickel in there, well, that's fine. So, that is the biggest thing that jumped out at us, right Bruce?
Yes.
And then, you get into the, uh, long-term care, which typically, um, is, is an issue of that, where you have to buy into that. My company, they give you, my company, you actually have to buy it, and the other part is too, and I did some kicking around, where if, um, like, for instance, a police fire gets hurt on the job, I think it's ten thousand dollars, killed on the job?
Yeah.
Well, most places have two fifty.
It's usually your, your salary or your-
Right, but I'm saying it's miniscule, uh, for people to put their lives on the line, and I don't know how expensive it is for a, um, on-the-job death benefit, I don't know what the price of it is, but I know Concord Fire does it, and I don't know if other ones do, but, um, ten thousand dollars, I mean, for a, for a, for a family man to stay here long-term, that, that's a big deal. That, that has a, you know, survivability for his family, so I don't know what the expense of these are, but I'd like to at least get a discussion, well, some facts, and discussion for this year, because I don't know how absorbent it they are, or how cheap they are, but I think that would help with our retention, because people jump, because, if I get hurt, I only got so much time, a lot of people take their time, they have no money.
So, yeah, so, last budget season, I guess, Beth kind of threw out there that there was some other benefits that employees been talking about, and those, those are definitely a couple of them. I, I did always think that the life insurance, you know, in this town, kind of was a joke, ten thousand. Hopefully, you know, not very many people have ever needed it.
That's a death benefit, not life insurance.
Well, that's all we offer.
Wait, that's all we offer?
Yeah. So, anyway, and the short-term disability, I agree, I think that's a good benefit. The, the only thing I'd say was, because we haven't had that in this town, they're allowed to cure nine hundred hours of sick time, where most places have short-term disability at maybe one sixty.
I understand, maybe it's a trade-off of these facts, but somebody just gets on the job for two years, maybe you can't accrue all that. So, I'm just saying, it's worth figuring out how absorbent it is, or how cheap it is.
I agree, I just, I want to, you know, ain't been here as long as Naomi, but been here long enough to know how we've come to get some of these benefits, and, um, I'm not saying that we shouldn't give them, I would probably vote in favor of short-term disability, just want to make everybody aware of that, because that's why we have nine hundred hours, is because we didn't have it. So, now, if we keep the nine hundred hours and short-term disability, it's awful easy for somebody, I know sick time is supposed to be for sick time, but you're not going to chase them around, so now you've got nine hundred hours-
That they get to save.
Maybe you cut that back.
That they can save, or they just keep taking off, you know, when, because I, I know when it was seven hundred and twenty hours, and I had a mortgage, I got a short-term disability insurance on my mortgage, so if I got hurt, my mortgage be paid, I almost didn't get it, because they said we've never seen anybody with seven hundred and twenty hours of sick time. Now, we get nine hundred. So, I, I'm not, I'm not advocating against it, and any employees are watching, please I'm not, I just want you to be aware that, that-
It could be one or the other, or some combination, because-
It might work, you know.
Short-term six months.
I'm pretty sure that if you tried to claw back on that nine hundred, you'd be on the list somewhere. I would not mess with that.
And we got nine hundred to follow with union.
We have to see where everybody is.
So.
Yeah, but I'm sure there's-
What I want to say is-
Far few people had nine hundred hours.
Short-term is six months.
Yeah.
That's, that's ten forty hours. Okay? So, that's almost closer to the nine hundred.
Yeah.
But the people who haven't been here long enough to accrue it have the problem. That's all I want to say.
Yeah, I agree.
Right, I mean, I get that point, but if people plan on that as part of their long-term plans-
Their retirement program.
Exactly.
What's that?
To get that nine hundred paid back.
Well, you can't unless you're going to stay here.
Yes, they, they-
No, I understand, I'm talking about long-term planning, somebody's thinking ahead.
No, but they changed, you can't, you can't, it's a percentage.
You get fifty percent if you stay here for a hundred years. Really?
I think I'm one of the last hundred years.
Yeah, I was, you're probably the last, I was one of them, I was here, but yeah, you had to be hired and-
Plus, you have to be fifty-five, and you have to be here twenty-five years, and you have to do some other things.
The only reason I bought it up is because we heard it, and it wasn't for one, it was all of them.
It's definitely worth looking into.
Same thing with insurance.
Yeah, dental and eye insurance, I mean, that's same. I, I always wished, when I was employee here, we had better, better, I don't want to be in dental, but I wished we had better opp, opportunities for that, I mean, I have the same plans the new boss and I had here, and it's a third price for dental for the same, same thing, I don't, must be in a different, I don't know why, but it's, and it doesn't cover crap either, by the way. I always wished that, because I mean, your death benefit, that'd be nice to have a hundred grand, but we're going to be here to spend it, I guess your family get it. Short-term disability, I think, is a great thing to have, I just don't think it's used by many for the people that are, I have a guy out on it, and I'm glad he is able to have it, but I'd be happy to, happy to continue this conversation. We did last year, I kind of got cut short because of budget restraints, but I also would be curious to see how many people would, you know, like I said, eye and dental, that was something I always wished a little bit, I spent a ton on dental when I had, paying for four people, because it was, you got like four cleanings a year, and that was it.
Yeah.
You had to go have a tooth ripped out or something, you had to, so I got in the chair, the cracked tooth, and they numbed me all up, got the pliers out, and they said, oh, by the way, you got to pay for your-
Yeah, yeah, who was your checkbook?
Four grand.
On your chest, right?
Okay, any other? Didn't have any correspondence or business sent to us, did we? I remember? I didn't remember anything sent to us this week.
So, no, you're not here for the next meeting?
Yeah, so, moving on to the agenda, I guess, it's up to you guys.
I didn't really have much on the agenda, but if something crossed up, we can-
I know we're working on, you know, a few things together as a board, I'd like to not long be on, but.
You got, you reach a little bit email right now?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they finally got internet a couple of years ago. This week, I stayed at my mom's a week, I flew out of town, ding 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 ding. Well, they got, they got, they got some technology. You still go to the gas station, they still write your Mountain Dew down on the yellow sweat, breaking the thunder down.
They still have the credit card that they have to-
Yeah. Uh, yeah, yeah.
They don't know if the credit card's any good or not, they can run it.
Still probably one of the few places that don't take credit cards everywhere, but you got a check.
Yeah.
Alright, well, with that said. Move that we adjourn at eight fifty-three.
A second?
All in favor?
Yes.
Against?
Wait, wait.